We're calling this regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Let the record show it's 6:38. We're going to call to order. All present, please say aye. Mary Salazar. Alex Peroni.
Here.
Cesar Rodriguez. Ulises Cárdenas.
Here.
Joseph Felix. Mary, can you please read lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mary. Any public comments not agendized items? Does anybody in the public have any comments for items not on the agenda?
I did not receive them.
Moving on. Approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
I have approval of agenda.
Monday?
Approval of agenda.
Yeah.
Not consent, just agenda.
Approval of agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now moving on to consent agenda. Approval of regular planning commission minutes of May 22, 2017, and June 12, 2017. Take a minute to... There's a couple of corrections that I made on the minutes for May 22. I guess I can pass this over to the city clerk for corrections. And we can just approve them for tonight. Is that correct? Gabby?
I want to be clear. Jill, she needs to be...
Yes, we need to read the corrections into the record.
Okay. On the minutes for May 22, my correction is on the first line where it says "call to order." The meeting was called to order at 6:41, but it doesn't say by which commissioner. So we're admitting the motion, the meeting was called to order by the commissioner on record. Also, the present on the attendance, the positions for the commissioners are wrong. It says commissioners when some of them are like myself, the chairperson, Mary Salazar, the vice chairwoman, and so on. Moving down to consent agenda, again, it says motion passed unanimously. And let the record show that issues say that I was absent. So that needs to be corrected. It's not a unanimous decision. On the second page, also, there's a correction. But it's mostly topographical. The fonts are off. That could be... Move on. On the last page, it says, again, the votes. It says it's missing Commissioner Cárdenas on his vote. And then on the top, it says "pass unanimously," when it should be "pass by vote." Because, again, I was absent and it was the rest of the commissioners took a vote. This is planning commission comments following... In the first paragraph, it says Commissioner Rodriguez recommended following what was said. It's vague, but I guess we can leave it like that. The closure for signatures, it says chairperson Alex Peroni. It should be Commissioner Peroni. And secretary Alex Peroni. Commissioner Alex Peroni. That's all I got. If any of the other commissioners have any other corrections? No more corrections? Okay. Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 22 and June 12, 2017?
So moved.
And that's with your corrections?
With the corrections mentioned.
That you just mentioned?
Yes, with the corrections. I'm sorry. Motion to approve the minutes with the corrections for May 22 as mentioned. Motion by Commissioner Peroni, seconded. Commissioner Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes passed. Moving on to public hearing. General plan amendment and zone change. Uniform application 2017-12. The proposed general plan amendment would redesign... Designate project area number one from low-density residential, LDR 1 to 5 units acre, and similarly designate project area number two from commercial highway-related uses to high-density residential HDR 12.2 to 12 units per acre. Usage of both. The proposed zone change would rezone project areas number one and number two from R1 residential single-family and commercial highway. Respect... Respective... What? Respectively... Okay. Two RA residential apartments. Can't see no more. We should do the font bigger. Ralph Morales, building planning manager, please.
The proposed applications are being considered to eliminate the legal non-conforming status of project area number one and project area number two, which is surrounded by a mixed existing single-family as well as residential apartment structures within the Calixco city limits. The project area number one consists of 57 properties totaling approximately three acres, and project area number two consists of five properties, which totals about one acre. The proposed application will allow for construction of future apartments and also fulfill directive under the 2013-2021 housing element update completed in January 2014, which outlined policies to promote housing opportunities for all economic groups. There was a workshop that was held on September 7, 2017, in order to inform the public of the general plan amendment and the zone change. There was also... For this public hearing, for this project, it was... There was a notice that was put in the Calixco Chronicle on Thursday, September 28, 2017, including direct mailing to all property owners located within 500-foot radius of both project areas. The public hearing was also posted on the city's internet website and in front of City Hall to inform the public of the scheduled public hearing. The project implementation requires city approval for the following documents and applications. The first one would be a negative declaration, second, general plan amendment, and the third, a zone change. And then the descriptions are based on the study. A initial study, negative declaration, which was conducted by city staff, and it was concluded that no significant environmental impact was resolved from the proposal. The environmental analysis was not project-specific, but was conducted instead as a program or policy level. Negative declaration to provide the necessary environmental evaluations and clearance for the project. The negative declaration was prepared in accordance with provisions contained in the California Environmental Quality Act, which is CEQA, and Public Resources Code, which is the PRC, Section 21,000, and the CEQA Guidelines, Section 15,000. The general plan amendment would redesign the project area number one from a low-density residential, which is 1 to 5 units, and redesign the project area number two from commercial highway-related uses to high-density residential usage, which is 12.1 to 20 units per acre. Number three, the zone change would rezone project areas number one and number two from R1 residential single-family and the commercial highway to residential apartments, which would be 12.1 to 20 units per acre. Staff supports the proposed application and recommends approval of the requested negative declaration, general plan amendment, and zone change for the following reason. The negative declaration is a policy-level analysis and not project-level... Physical development is not being proposed at this time nor analyzed in the negative declaration. Future proposal would require additional entitlements and approvals by the city. It would be at that time that a project-level environmental analysis would be conducted to address impacts such as noise, traffic, air quality, and other things. And as discussed, this proposal would not result in any significant impact. The general plan amendment change would allow for future development of the site. Staff recommends approval of the requested general plan amendment, which is... Which will redesignate project area number one from the low-density residential, and similarly redesignate project area number two, which is currently a commercial highway-related uses to this, would be the high-density residential usage. The zone change would rezone project area number one and number two from residential single-family and commercial highway to residential apartments. His application would redesignate the changed zones to allow future construction of multifamily residential developments. His action would be characterized as effort to comply with housing element policies by changing zoning to allow higher-density construction. The foregoing report described the general plan amendment and zone change as proposed. Options available to the commission regarding the project include the following. Number one would be motion to approve the negative declaration environmental document, general plan amendment, and zone change with the adoption of the required findings. Number two would be motion to deny the general plan amendment and zone change with the adoption of the required findings against the proposal. At this time, it is staff recommendation that the public commission open the public hearing and allow input from all individuals of the proposed project. The proposed project would be consistent with the general plan and housing element, and it is staff recommendation that the proposed general plan amendment, zone change, be recommended for approval by taking the following action. To approve the resolution number 2017 recommending the city council adoption of the negative declaration, resolution number 2017 recommending to the city council approval of the general plan amendment, and resolution number 2017 recommending the city council approval of the zone change.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay. At this moment, we're going to open the public comments. We have a comment card for Mr. Joe Acuna III. He left? Okay. He just wrote, "It's a good project for area number one and area number two." And I guess he's in favor of it. We have a request for comments also for Callie Mathiopoulos.
I can't move very much, so I'll just stand.
We don't have a mic that we can...
Yes.
Just a second, Ms. Mathiopoulos.
I think very loud, I'll keep it for a long time, I can really project my voice.
Check one, check.
Okay.
Thank you. My name's Callie Orfanos Mathiopoulos, and I was born and raised in this town. Don't ask me why I came back, but I love it and I want the best for it. And I guess that's the main reason I'm here for. I don't see the need for a carte blanche change in zone. I think there are many, many problems that are going to come up with apartment buildings hopping up all over in this 10 acres. Some is traffic, some are school problems, some are crime rates. Because wherever there's a lot of concentrated population, you do need more police, which we already have enough already as it is in our town. There are so many, many things. Traffic, our streets are narrow. There's many things. But the main thing that I think that we all should take in consideration is that I don't think it should be a carte blanche variance. It should be if anyone wants to build an apartment building, they should have to go through... Apply for a variance like everybody else has before, and then give the people in that vicinity the chance to voice their opinion. And therefore, each one should be a different case. There aren't that many people that are going to be doing that right away, so you won't have that much work to do. But give the people in that area a chance to protect their property. Property that many people have had for years and generations and residents that they live in. There are so many different things that I could go into right now. And as used as I am talking to kids, I'm not used to talking to grownups. So there's a lot of things I would like to say. If you have any questions, ask me. But the thing to remember is with anything new like this, there's always going to be problems that come up. So all I'm asking all of you is to please think very carefully before you do this, because there are very... A lot of problems connected with this. I'm not saying don't have apartments, because God knows, we probably need them, but it should not be at a carte blanche system. It should be each person, each project should be tried on its own, one point at a time, and give the people around there, the residents, a chance to protect their property. Basically, that's it. I want to thank you for listening to me. I had a whole paper written, but I didn't read it because I can't see. So you have to just... Like I said, I'm asking you, if you have any questions, ask me. As to how I feel or why I feel that way. Like I said, I was born and raised here, and my parents came here way before I did. And way when this little town was a little town where you could just cross the border and come back and forth, and it was a very little town. And I've seen it grow, and sometimes for the better, sometimes not, but I still love it. And many people told me, "Don't go to the meeting. It's not going to do you any good. Nobody's going to listen to you." But I don't believe that. I believe that you'll all think about it very carefully before you decide anything. Because it is... First of all, the city will not have much control once that happens, because they'll... Everybody will have the right to build whatever they want and whenever they want. So the city will lose some of the control over it. So I thank you again, and please, please, think very carefully before you decide on this particular item. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Mathiopoulos. Does anybody have any questions for her? No? Okay. Alguna otra persona que quiera decir algún comentario a favor o en contra de los proyectos? Si gustan pueden pasar.
Se escucha? Sí. Buenas tardes a todos, labor, los brentantes de building.
Si puede darnos su nombre y dirección para el récord, para el secretario.
Soy Alfredo Hernández. Este, soy empresario aquí de Calixco. Tengo 20 años aquí en la Siri. Este, he visto cómo ha crecido la Siri y he visto cómo si hay algo que felicitar a los miembros, al staff y al planning y building, es que hacen todo muy minucioso y a veces un poco de más, ¿verdad? En todos los requirines que se requieren para hacer construcciones o para hacer avances o modificaciones en las obras. Okay? Este, pues primero que nada, pues quisiera felicitar al staff por esta preocupación que yo he visto aquí desde que estaba Ricardo Hinojosa en building and planning, cómo se hace lo mismo, okay? Pero con otro nombre, okay? Y nunca se ha tomado el... Pues no hablo mucho inglés, así que tengo que decirlo en español, pero nunca se ha tomado el toro por los cuernos. Esto quiere decir que en la época de Hinojosa, por ejemplo, simplemente se requería a condicional use permit para hacer los mismos proyectos, y se seguían haciendo. Y una muestra de eso es que tanto en la zona 1 como en la zona 2, si ustedes ven la densidad de población, es muy alta conforme con lo que debiera de ser un R1, una single-family property, okay? El problema no es que estemos solicitando un cambio de uso para hacer más propiedades. Las propiedades ya están hechas. Y se me hace injusto que algunos miembros dueños de su parcela, de su lote, de su propiedad, tengan un uso... Un uso que fue favorecido y que se les permitió hacer departamentos y que a otros no se les permita. Se me hace injusto. En la ciudad Calixco siempre hemos visto, pues que hay una igualdad para las personas y un trato justo. Entonces, es muy loable. Yo en lo personal, pues tengo una propiedad y a lo mejor no tengo la necesidad, ¿verdad? Pero sí me interesó la junta, ¿verdad? Porque mi propiedad es, de hecho, sea de paso, es un R1, es un single-use house. Y no es así. Tengo una casa que tiene 84 años y que tiene una casa enfrente de 84 años y una... Y dos departamentos atrás, que también tienen 84 años, y por los cuales se han estado pagando property taxes por 84 años. Entonces, me parece que estamos viviendo una incongruencia. Me parece que la ciudad Calixco debe de regularizar esto y tener sus propiedades en orden. Tenemos muchas propiedades que tienen este... Una situación de legal non-conformous use. Eso crea confusión, de evaluar las propiedades. Y sobre todo crea confusión porque se habla de favoritismos, se habla de prioridades, se habla de compadrazgos, se habla de amigos, se habla de favorecer agentes. Pues queremos quitar esa impresión, ¿no? Que se regularice y que se diga, "Okay, estas propiedades son así, reúne tus requisitos." Y yo no tengo este... La menor duda de que la ciudad Calixco va a hacer las cosas bien y que ya lo pensó y que se está proponiendo esto y se van a seguir las reglas como se deben de seguir, okay? Y si se hace esto, pues que no sea nada más por los ingresos, que va a generar esto para la Siri o para el distrito escolar, sino que también es una... Es un voto de igualdad para todas las personas que tengan la misma oportunidad, ¿verdad? Porque este... En mi caso, yo tengo un R1, single-family property, y a cada lado hay cinco departamentos. Okay? Se me hace injusto que estén devolviendo mi propiedad y se me hace injusto que, por ejemplo, pues yo puedo que lo requiero, puede que no, porque ya había dos propiedades ahí. Y ya viéndolo yo con building y todo, se me dijo claramente, "Tú tienes tu casa enfrente, no tienes problemas, y atrás te vamos a respetar las dos unidades que ya tienen 84 años." Okay? Pero sí quiero que se regularice, y por eso estoy aquí, para darle certidumbre a la gente que va a comprar una propiedad, para que todas las propiedades se jueguen con las cartas limpias y en la mesa, y que no se oiga por ahí. A mí se me molesta cuando hablan mal de la ciudad Calixco. A mí sí se me molesta cuando se dice que hay favoritismos, okay? Y se me molesta cuando se dice que a unas personas les dicen con conditional use permit y a otras no. Y gente que habla porque no sabe. Siempre que se ha requerido algo, yo conozco desde que estaba la época Hinojosa, y pues se hacen las cosas como se deben hacer, ¿verdad? Pero se pueden evitar muchas cosas. Haciendo algo que es legal non-conformous use, definitivamente. Simplemente se le va a dar su nombre como debe de ser. Ahora podría ser un RA, residential apartment, porque es lo que tenemos. Vamos, no estamos buscando algo que no existe. Simplemente es... Yo quiero que reflexionemos un poco que... Que no estamos haciendo rezoning. El rezoning ya lo hizo 100 años de evolución de la ciudad Calixco. El rezoning ya está. Estamos nosotros aquí analizando un problema, o al menos yo, de algo que tiene 100 años de evolución y que se hizo en el transcurso de varias generaciones que nos antecedieron. Y nosotros estamos aquí pensando que estamos haciendo un rezoning, cuando el rezoning ya está hecho. Simplemente tenemos un legal non-conformous use. Esa es mi opinión. Y estoy completamente de acuerdo en que se regularice y se le dé el nombre que debe de llevar y siga todo el comportamiento legal que debe tener una zona como lo debe tener. No estamos haciendo una nueva zona. La zona ya está... Tiene 100 años, que está ahí. Gracias.
Gracias, señor Hernández. Alguna otra persona que tenga algún comentario a favor o en contra? Mr. Romero, please, the podium. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson and Commissioners, my name is Richard Romero, 806 Ward Court. I'm in favor of this proposal here, but I would have... I own the property on 401 Washington Street. And based on this current proposal, three homes in front of me are being converted to multiple RA, and the entire Frontage Road on Heber next to my home are being converted. I would have loved to be included in that destination, because I know that this increases the value of the property. As the gentleman said, yes, there's a lot of non-conforming situations there, and now they're being rewarded by this destination, which is fine. But I followed the rules. I didn't make any conversions, but I'm being left out. And I would love you guys to consider including the property 401 Washington Street, because Variance is... You get... Costs money, and this would be different. So therefore, I would ask for your consideration in doing this. And I want to thank staff for doing a good job on the reporting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Alguna otra persona? Anybody else? Can she?
This time is only for public comments. There's no question and answer portion between the commissioners and anyone from the audience.
Okay. We're going to close the comments from the public. Oh, there's two more people. Si pueden pasar, por favor, al micrófono. Gracias.
Mi nombre es Luis Villa. Tengo de radicar cinco años aquí en Calixco. Nos llegó el escrito donde se iba a permitir regularizar la situación de terrenos que tenían propiedades y anexo apartamentos. Se fijó un perímetro en forma circular y otros sombreados, y ahí entramos en una confusión nosotros. Estamos dentro del perímetro. Su casa está en 425 Roman Street, pero no estamos dentro de los sombreados. Entonces, vine a consultarlo. Me dijo que yo no era este... O nadie en mi terreno no estaba dentro de los programas de regularización. Entonces, mi pregunta es, ¿cuándo puedo yo adquirir ese derecho de regularización a construir un apartamento, una casa adicional? No sé si entre dentro de la situación que se está manejando ahorita. Y si es así, no sé si tengan alguna respuesta.
Vamos ahorita a preguntarle al director.
Okay.
Ahorita nomás estamos recibiendo los comentarios, pero su pregunta se la voy a hacer al director para que conteste ahorita.
Okay. Gracias, muy amable.
Gracias, señor.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Silvia Real. Tenemos ya cinco años viviendo aquí en Calixco. Me encanta la ciudad. Me encanta cómo están llevando esta situación. Lo único que a mí sí se me hace un poco injusto, ¿por qué no más a ciertas gentes? ¿Por qué no nos dan la oportunidad? Mi esposo y yo tenemos 55 años. Cuando nos llegó esta solución, dijimos, "Tengo un ahorro. Si me hacen R para hacer apartamentos a mi futur..." solución dijimos tengo un ahorro, si me hacen R para hacer apartamentos a mi futuro yo puedo poner un apartamento atrás o dos para mi vejez, estábamos considerando eso, estábamos muy contentos, tenemos un ahorro y eso es una situación, pero ya que venimos y preguntamos si nos hace algo injusto, a mí me hubiera gustado más, yo me dedico al real estate, trabajo con el señor Sanvillanueva, este y él más o menos me decía, o sea, lo ideal para mí hubiera sido de que sabes que vamos a esta zona así como la marcaron la vamos a hacer, hubieran hecho una propuesta, hey señor, ¿es quién de estos aquí quiere? Y ya la gente que pudiera, ¿verdad?, ya nos hubieran escrito pues, o sea, como ya nos estás considerando cuando ya ya tomaron usted la decisión qué parcelas son, entonces este nosotros estábamos viendo por esa situación de que a futuro, me parece magnífico y como dijo el señor regularizar las cosas, no digo que no, está perfecto, yo lo estoy viendo a futuro para cuando estemos viejos pues de perdía uno o dos apartamentitos atrás tener nosotros un ingreso, ¿verdad?, pero eso sí, a mí sí se me hizo, o sea, ¿y por qué no más ellos?, porque esas gentes ya sé quiénes son, ¿verdad?, y pues nos dan oportunidad, o sea, porque pues todos queremos no vivir de limonada del gobierno sino tener nuestro propio manera de subsistir y esa es una cosa que nos ayudaría mucho a nosotros y creo que le serviría Caléxico también que definiéramos la zona, ¿verdad?
Señora, disculpe, ¿cuál es su dirección?, a cuál zona?
Cuatro veinticinco Rosman.
Señora, le quiero decir también que hoy el lo que también hay una ley del Estado que aparte de eso usted puede construir, que se llama el ADU empezando enero de 2017, usted ya lo puede hacer y aquí le pueden decir aquí los de la ciudad, esto es una cosa de la zona que van a cambiar, esa es un es una ley aplicada por el Estado.
Ahorita vamos a ir a más detalle eso señora, no hay más comentarios, okay, please, the podium.
Buenas tardes, muchas gracias por recibirnos, bueno yo quiero expresarles mi alegría porque me parece muy bien estar en zonificación que están.
Disculpa, no escuché tu nombre.
Mi nombre es Adriana Martínez.
Adriana Martínez.
Vivo vivo en el 2151 R Carrillo aquí en Caléxico, solo quería expresarles que estamos muy contentos por esta zonificación, que nos parece muy bien porque nosotros tenemos un predio aquí en 801 Blair y Charman y nuestro predio ya tiene unos apartamentos pero tiene un excedente, son dos terrenos juntos y pues nos gustaría y nos parece muy bien que podamos construir más que cuatro apartamentos porque nosotros nos damos cuenta que cada que hay un apartamento disponible son en promedio cincuenta, setenta aplicaciones las que recibimos y pues es mucha la demanda la que tenemos y a veces queremos ayudar a más que una familia pues o más que una mujer soltera con hijos o dos ancianos y así y pues a veces no podemos pues porque solo tenemos estos apartamentos y aunque ya sometimos el nuestro proyecto aquí al ayuntamiento, quisiéramos poder construir más que cuatro apartamentos para pues para poder ayudar a más gente, darles el servicio de vivienda y pues es lo que nosotros vemos que sí se necesita más apartamentos que los que hay en esta zona, gracias.
Any more comments from the public? This time we're gonna close the public comments and we're gonna go into discussion. Does any of the Commissioners have any comments or questions for staff? Mary?
Okay, Mister Romero, is there a reason why we couldn't have specific addresses for, if I was reading the notifications, they would just have parcel numbers, they wouldn't have any idea if it's close to their area or next door or anything, is there something we can do in order to like we have situations where some people are missed out because of the end of the block, are we talking one square block, you know, is there anything that that could change so it would be more specific?
Well, what staff did when, first of all, there were some applications that were submitted on property owners that were interested in building apartments and one of the ways that and again in the past it was allowed that if one went through a CUP then possibility they could be approved for an apartment, we did that a couple, I think a couple of times we went to the planning commission under a CUP, but administration decided that it would be better instead of doing CUPs in certain areas and having, continuing to have this double usage, R1 zoned and having multiple apartments within that area, that it would be better that if we went in there and we cleaned those areas, especially when there's sufficient or multiple apartment complexes to go ahead and convert them into RA or for apartment usage, so one of the things the staff did, they went out and they did a survey, especially within the areas of the applicants that had requested for a CUP to build apartments and the survey was for for the reason of to see whether their request was something that was something justifiable and also to see what else was in the surrounding, so was there sufficient apartments or what is it that we had and one of the things that they found in the survey that the area that we're looking at is an older area and it's true somebody in the audience brought up is that there's areas where there's a house and then you have a structure or two structures in the back and it was approved back years back and we're talking about before the eighties and maybe in the fifties and so basically there's not much we can do about that, we can't go in there and tell them we'll knock down your house and you can only have one structure, the best thing to do is to go in, clean it by changing the zoning and allow those that qualify because remember just because if it would be the planning Commissioners' decision to recommend this to the city council and it got approved, just because it's approved our NRA, it doesn't mean that everybody's going to qualify to build apartments and even if they do, it's going to depend on the square footage of the lot as to how many units they can build on the lot, so we want those that have concerns to feel comfortable that, hey, in a small lot, somebody's gonna come in and put six, seven or eight units, that's not gonna happen because there's still regulations that they have to meet in order to do that, now I know that someone was concerned too that they got a letter and everything, they thought that they were they were in the area, the law requires that when a situation like this, there's a zone change, that we inform everybody within a five hundred foot radius, so because they're impacted within that area, they have a right to come in and make comments in regards whether they're in favor or not because they could be impacted by the construction. They got a letter, letters just went out and we sent it to all the addresses within that area.
So the ones that missed out on that one section cut off as not the rezone, where they get the opportunity, once they see the changes, they can come in and go through the staff and ask?
Well, they could, they could request it, I mean, now, again, we have to be, you know, I don't wanna say they can request and they'll get it, that doesn't mean that, we would have to do a study, make sure that that they qualify, that there's sufficient evidence there that they could qualify to have that rezone, that and also, you know, maybe they may want it, but if the neighbors and everybody around it are opposed to it, that doesn't mean that they'll get it.
They were just the unlucky ones at the very end of the rezone and they would cost them more money and time?
To have a rezone? Well, there's a fee that they have to pay, I think the fee is what, about eight thousand? Yeah, about eight thousand for a rezone and the individual, the applicants that did apply went ahead and paid that, so.
I know everything's closed, but the mailing did not go out through the US mail and not everybody got that, the letter, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, there was two mailings that went out, there was one for.
Through the US mail?
There was two, two, I'm sorry, there was two notices, let me rephrase that, there were two notices that went out and it's true, the first one didn't go through the US mail, we had staff that personally went out and delivered it to every household, the second for this public hearing did go through the US mail. Or this one went through the US mail, the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but the first one was for September seventh?
Yeah, that was for a public meeting.
Yeah, and that's where everything kinda got hammered down, right?
No, didn't, I mean, that was just to get input, just to let everybody know what was going on, this is where the decision will be made, understand?
Okay, Commissioner, you have a question?
No.
Have a question, so, okay, Miss Mathiopoulos, you got a public workshop notice via mail, that is what you got in the mail? Hand over. But it was not an official seal stamped by with the, so you were not officially notified by the city staff?
Yeah, it was a notice.
That was not officially, you have officially notified. How, what about the meeting for tonight, were you officially notified via mail? Okay. Okay, just, alright, okay, um, okay, we just wanted to clarify that for the record that you were officially notified, otherwise we'll be in trouble, okay, moving on, um, okay, Ralph, why the spot zoning, why selective properties and not like certain people were saying were not considered and on that?
Like I mentioned earlier, the areas that we're looking at are areas that we receive interest or applications on people that wanna build, so we looked in those areas and what staff did when they went out, they did a windshield survey, which they found that those areas had multiple housing and properties, so those are the two different or three different areas actually where the applicant have shown interest that they want to build multiple.
Were there more than one property owner showing interest or was it just?
It was more than one.
One predominant property owner that said, I want my zone changed, therefore the whole block is gonna change.
Well, actually, they didn't come in and ask for a zone change, they came in for a CUP, at the project review committee, it was at that point it was recommended or, yeah, was recommended that instead of doing a CUP, that we go in there and do a zone change for those areas so that we wouldn't have.
Who came up with a bright idea to do the zone change?
Who was it, the PRC committee.
The entire committee said, let's go ahead and change it?
Well, I mean, it was the majority of the committee.
Was there a particular department head that said, let's go ahead and consider changing?
No, it wouldn't be one because one department head doesn't doesn't make a decision as to how things go.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, cause it's, I mean, I, I'm, I do also express concern that we have some residents who have lived there for the majority of their life and they're comfortable with their R1 zoning or with those neighbors, they might have received the variance or a CUP, but we're spot zoning, it's, that's where I don't understand why and who did the survey, why didn't they consider the entire block or put out the survey out in the public so that they would come in like some of these property owners and say, hey, I got some interest, let me know if my property qualifies and based on that then consider them as part of that zone change because we do have a university right next door and I know they they desire a lot of apartment units for their students because we have a lot of students that are coming to study up from abroad and they need those one bedroom apartment for students, we need, we do, I do agree, we do need other apartments, but if we could consider putting more blocks, more streets, more properties, why didn't we, if we perform a study, why wasn't that expanded?
Well, like I said.
That's just in one area and then going on to the other area, again, why, why the spot zoning because you have a odd looking shape and then two, three properties up in the north, why, is there a particular interest, is there?
Well, there is a particular interest because there was an applicant that owns property in that area and that's why we looked at that area because they, they're the ones that came in and they paid their fee, the other thing is that, like I said before, it was staff that went out and did the the survey of those areas and that was the recommendation that he came in to do, I'm trying to look at the map here from the back and the areas, so, I mean, it, the thing is, is that we could take the whole city and zone that RA, but again, that's not the purpose, the purpose is more to fill those areas that have more rentals in those areas only because at one time and point they got approved either through a CUP or however to build a unit in the bank, so to be consistent, we need to kind of fill those gaps there and assure that the zone, or not assure, but make the zone change there, there's nothing to say that they, others, if they're interested, that they can't come in and apply for other areas to change the zone.
But I still feel like Commissioner Salazar said, some of those property owners will be in a disadvantage and they will have to fork out ten thousand dollars for a permit when they could have been considering the, in this project area number one and be under the law, now, even if we change the zone, if the property does not meet the requirements for apartment units, they still will be losing, cause they won't be able to build any apartments if the lot is not big enough, so why do the zone change?
Well, you do the zone change to.
Only to increase the value of the property owners?
Well, is.
Basically, that's what you're doing, cause we still need, we still need to have the lots meet conformity, otherwise they will still need to pay a CUP to get a permit to build whatever they wanna build, true or not true, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, the thing is that we want to do away with CUPs for apartments and R1 zone, that I don't feel that that is is good business for the city to be doing that, I know that we have done it, but we need to go in there and those areas where they're existing, they are existing, second unit, second and third unit, those are the ones that we need to cover and change the zone for those areas, otherwise then you're gonna have, that's where you're gonna have your spot zoning there because now you're gonna be on an R1 zone and all of a sudden somebody's gonna come with a CUP and request for apartments and so you have one here, you can have one there where you could cover it, and it's true, the best thing to do would be to make everybody happy to zone the whole thing RA and then, hey, that takes care of the whole problem, but that's not the purpose of, I feel that that's not the purpose of planning, we're looking at the older areas, unfortunately the older areas, this is what we have and we're trying to do the best we can, the area that we went into is because there's individuals that came in and they show interest that they wanted apartments, that's why we moved forward on it, so it's not that we're discriminating against some of the other ones, is that we're trying to help those that are interested in building apartments and at this point. and at this point, unless they go through a CUP, they can qualify. And it's true, I don't think that it's going to bring down the value of the properties. I really don't think it will. But, but again, that's everybody's opinion and, you know, what the public want.
Ralph, on Area 2. You got the smaller circle there, and you know those, there's already apartments in there. So, why are you?
Because of the zoning in there is not incompatible with what's there, that's why.
Okay.
And that's what I'm, excuse me, that's what I'm trying to do, is to clean what we have here. If you look into zoning of commercial, we have apartments. You're looking at our way, we have apartments. So, what is the best thing to do is to clean it up by changing the zoning.
Well, I'm concerned on the way the, the properties or the areas were selected. Am I against it? No, I'm not against it, because we do need a housing in Callexico, and I believe our housing component for the city has not been met. So, but the way you selected them, it looks kind of odd. So, I'm wondering why were the other ones who were left out? Because, for example, I'll give you Rosemont. I see two lots were only picked on Rosemont, when you left out about 20 on that same street. So, anybody would probably think, that's kind of funny, these two were only picked, the rest were left out. And we go like Mr. Romero, you know, he's over there on Heber. Why across the street and not his area? So. Uh-huh, so I'm, I believe this is a good start, you know, but to make a decision would be kind of a little difficult. So, we, you know, give everybody the opportunity, you know, to voice their opinions on this. But it does look very odd, the way they were selected. And that second project area, it gives me concern. It gives me concern the way it was done. So, those are my comments.
Yeah, I, I think we, I don't know who did the study or how you guys went about to select these properties, but I feel that we could have done a better job doing more of a survey or whoever. I mean, I don't know what kind of study, how you guys came about to this property, selecting them. But, I don't know. I'm, I'm just not, I, like, I, I'm with Commissioner Peroni. It's a good idea, but it just doesn't feel good when you're spot zoning, just like we are doing selective zoning-changing, and that doesn't feel good. So, I don't know. We may need to do more, more research or more studying on this, but that's my opinion. Commissioner Ulises, do you have any comments or questions? Any more comments?
Is there any way that we could extend, you know, how you highlighted the way as you rezoning? Add to it possible, you know, like we look at it to extend possible future rezoning, like in a, you know, yellow future to expand it, so that the new, the ones that missed out on the rezoning cannot cost them those $8,000 for the wait? Is there something you guys can do that, like that is planable a bit more?
Well, for us to go back and realign the boundaries, I think we would have to start all over again, correct? And that would then cost a good amount of money to do that.
So, why don't we, why don't we consider table, I mean, oh, not table, continue the item for review? Because I would say, if anything, you may want to consider all the way from wherever your R1 zone begins on, what is it, Area Project Number 2, all the way to, to Rosemont? Because you have a, I mean, we already have existing apartments in all this area. You might as well consider all the way to Rosemont or even up to the hospital property. I don't know, I mean, based on your study. And the same here, I mean, on Project Area Number 1, if we're changing it to Commercial Highway, why not consider the whole entire corridor from Imperial to Pauline Avenue?
It doesn't make sense to go from Imperial. Imperial is commercial, and that's what you have, is business, so.
Or from whatever the other vicinity street, what do you have?
Have apartments there.
Pauline and.
That goes from the alley, from the alley down to Pauline.
Well, why can't we see where the zone change is and meet with it and, you know, expand it as a corridor type of thing? I know, or, I don't know. The other thing is that, I'm reading your study, and based on your study, you saying that it will not create any more impact to fire and police. According to our chiefs, with their children and man staff, they don't have enough police officers and firefighters to protect the current population. Zoning changing will create more property, more people, more protection, and that would impact them directly. So, your report here is outdated.
Well, the thing is, you can look at it in two methods. One is true, that by building more units, you're going to have more individuals living there. But by the same token, by building more units, what you do is you charge an impact fees, which those impact fees go to fire and police. So, if you're building, in a sense, it's good for the city, and it's good for those departments, because part of those impact fees goes to those two departments.
But you just said there is no project lined up. This is just a zone change with no project lined up. So, there is no impact fees coming in.
Like everything else, we have two real estate people here, and I don't think that they wait until, until the projects fall on their lamps. They think ahead, and they see what is coming up, and they plan accordingly in the future. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, it's the same with zoning. You don't wait until the people are all knocking on your door, and then you think, okay, we're going to do a zone change. You kind of, we try to think ahead, and this is one of the things that would happen, because then this benefits everything.
Okay, Ralph, we're not going to go into argument over planning regulations, but you don't build and then hope somebody's going to give you water, fire, and sewer and police protection. You built according to your needs. And our city doesn't have any fire and police protection presently.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have a motion on the floor to approve Items Number 1 and 2?
I make a motion to approve, but to continue this dialogue on the selective way that this was picked out. I think it's something good that we move forward, but there, I have concerns the way it was selected. To me, in some ways, it was like shekered board, and I don't think it's fair because of the surrounding people, so.
So, is your motion to continue and direct staff to further look at this, you're not actually making a motion to approve any of the resolutions?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, I heard also a concern that a lot of the community wasn't.
Informed.
Informed, so that way, maybe word of mouth gets out there, and people that have concerns can probably come to the next meeting. So, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Salazar.
And just to clarify, is this being continued to a date uncertain? We're not choosing a date?
How much time will the staff?
Yeah, that will be upon staff once they complete their.
The motion is to continue, Ralph. Have another public hearing, and also, maybe, I mean, my concern is the way properties were selected. And, you know, because there's people here tonight that are saying, hey, you know what, I'm on that same street. Why wasn't my property, you know, give the same opportunity to all? And, you know, based upon that feedback, then we can make a more accurate decision.
So, you wanted to expand the study and survey of the adjacent properties?
Exactly, exactly, because, you know, I see that street on Rosemont that, I mean, there's 20 properties on it, and two of them were picked.
And then maybe.
Maybe it could be.
Right, so that we can have, you know, I mean, like.
Yeah, but we're going to see what the city.
Yeah, actually, since this, in speaking with Mr. Morales, the whole entire study will have to be redone, so we wouldn't be able to continue it. It would have to be a new item. So, perhaps the commission wants to deny the resolutions as they are proposed.
But if we deny it, you will take the items to City Council for consideration with our denying. For their, yeah.
Well, it would be something I would discover with the city manager, but that very well could be. But the thing is, you can't continue, what you're asking for is two different things. You're asking for a continuation to bring it back. But then, I hear Commissioner Peroni that's saying, expand the boundaries, and we can do a continuance and just come back and move the line. We would have to go back and do the whole thing all over again.
Well, because, okay, Ralph, if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong. You perform a study to change the way it reads on the general plan, on the general plan maps, on the zoning maps, so you can have another public hearing, just saying, we would like to consider zone change for this area and highlight from whatever street to whatever street, and then have another public workshop? So that you can do the zone change and implement it with the general plan? That cannot be done?
No, 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 can't.
Not in within 30 days?
I don't feel that it can be done. The city attorney is the only one that can answer that.
Well, that is the proper way to do a zone change, because the general plan is already done, the housing element is already done. So, all you have to do is do a workshop with 30 days review period, bring it back, and then present it. See what the, what feedback you got from the residents. 30 days. Is that too much?
Okay, we do that? We would do that to go back and then come back and expand the target area? That's what I'm saying, we have to do the whole thing, so. So, that would be the thing. I mean. You tell me what legally what we can and cannot do. And redo it and start all over.
Okay, so, what was the legal advice?
Well, what I hear from the city attorney is that if we're going to be expanding the line, we have to start all over again from step 1. So, yeah, and then the other thing too, I mean, if we go out there and we expand the boundaries, was there not to say that somebody's going to come in and say, hey, what about my area? And it's going to continue on and on. And like I said before, the reason these areas were selected is not because we, we're being selective on certain individuals or parties. These are individuals that paid, and they came in, they asked, and what we did is that we went in there and did the survey within that area. Those areas are areas that have large properties that already, so many of them in those areas have rentals in there. And so, that was a criteria that we went by. It wasn't selective areas that, for any, any other purpose than that, so. I'm looking at it.
The reason is, I don't think there is, because those are existing apartments.
That's what I was thinking.
That's how this plan was created, the criteria was that there were existing apartments. And a lot of these lots are large, a lot of 8,000 square feet lots, so.
What about over here on Rosemont where Mr. Romero has his property?
Oh, in Heber.
Washington.
From the San Diego State, there's about seven, these are, this is full of apartment.
Yeah, I agree with you.
They were all approved under CUP.
Right, and then, right, and then you have those residential, which is Mr. Legaspi and Mr. Rashid. And then, no, on Sherman, on the corner, right there. Sherman in Heber, the other side. No, to your right, to your right, right there. Right, finger to the right, to the right, there's, uh-huh, that's Rashid, and then the next one is Mr. Legaspi. And then the rest are a bunch of apartments next to it. And then behind Mr. Legaspi is Mr. Romero's property and. So. So, Mr. Romero, let me ask you, did you request that zone change? But you did not put in. Okay, so why was this property considered not the rest of the block?
Because he, because he's in every house and, and a whole garage. It may be possible that we could do another zone change where there's two or three people existing. But, but at this point, the criteria that draw this are those people that are interested and the fact that there's existing apartments throughout both areas. So, that's why you get this configuration, sticks up here and goes up here.
So, let me ask Mark, since Romero's property is so close to your zone change, will he be able to do this later on and then have the additional cost that would be if you had to do this all over again?
It can be a variance.
Yeah, we'd have to ask for a variance or something?
Well, the CM is telling us not to do CUPs. And that's how we, that's how a lot of these apartments that are existing, like Mr. Fernandez was saying, these are all non-conforming.
Right.
Legal issues, because of the city, and never changed the zone. So, that's not a good designation either, legal.
But Mark, it's the same thing with people having a garage enclosure on a residential area. They have to get a CUP. You automatically change the zoning when you allow for them to close their garage and do a senior studio in the back. No, well, I mean, but you change the zoning, basically, because from a single-family home, you allowed to have multiple homes, a garage enclosure, and a rental unit in the back.
Well, they're not supposed to be rented.
Well.
I mean, we know it goes on.
We don't have 24-hour, 24/7 code enforcement out there.
Those things are allowed through the municipal code, so there's not a whole lot we can do about that. They come in, they get a, wow, what do you call that? I'm forgetting the name of it, the guest house. Or they close their garage because they want to expand their square footage. We understand that in Callexico, there's such a high demand for rentals that many close their garages. They claim that they're going to use it, and on the plans they submit, it shows that it's part of the structure. What happens after we turn around and walk away? And it's true, like you said, we don't have eyes 24 hours, but unless somebody calls in. in and tells us, hey, there's a separate unit there, it's hard for us to tell. Now, it is true that there are garage enclosures that have a second kitchen, but those are under the granny flats. And like Mr. Peroni brought out, there is a new law that now allows for what they call ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And so, we're getting to the point that, unfortunately, California is needing more and more housing, so that's why California passed that law. There's not a whole lot that we can do about that. One of the things that we can do is go in and do the zone change to allow apartments where they do qualify.
And you're saying you're gonna be doing this again, when somebody comes in to apply for a rezoning, you'll be doing the same study, and then possibly expand to the areas that were missed out on the rezon, correct?
Just because somebody asks for a rezone, doesn't mean they're gonna get it. There has to be significant reasoning for that. You have to have, show that there's probably rentals around the area, and so that, you know, they can be approved for that.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll change to... Well, we need to have a motion. Motion, okay.
Any motion? Make any motion?
Yes. Want to make a motion to deny Item Number 1 and Number 2, based on the, on the concerns we have on the design of spot zoning that we have present here? Do I have a second?
A second.
And to be clear, excuse me, to be clear, you're recommending...
Denial.
Denial of the three separate resolutions. Do we have numbers for those?
No, we don't.
Okay. Can we read the full name of each resolution into the motion?
Can we what, I'm sorry?
Can you please read the full title of the resolution that you're recommending denial for?
You want me to read the attached resolutions?
The title of each, of all three.
Are these the one? Okay. We have a motion to deny resolution from the Callexico Planning Commission, City of Callexico, California, recommending the City Council approval of a zone change to change the zoning classification from Project Areas Number 1 and Number 2 from R1 Residential Single Family and CH Commercial Highway to RA Residential Apartments. That's the first resolution. We have a motion to deny resolution, Planning Commission resolution, da-da-da-da-da, recommending to the City Council of the City of Callexico, approval of general plan amendment to the city's general plan for Project Areas Number 1 and Number 2 from LDR, Low Density Residential and Commercial, related uses to HDR, High Density Residential. And the third resolution... Motion to deny the third resolution, which is the recommendation of approval of a negative declaration, Number 2017-01, to the City Council for GPA Number 2017-01, and Zone Change Number 2017-01. And there was a second by Commissioner Peroni. Call for question, all those in favor? All those against?
Aye.
Salazar voted against it. Motion passed. Correct?
I have.
Did you vote?
I did, aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, 3, 2, 1. Moving on, informational items, Planning Commission attendance record. We'll just acknowledge that we have received the attendance record for the Planning Commission. Gabby, any staff comments? None? Staff, no comments? None? Planning Commissioner comments?
Yes, I have a comment. Ralph, you know, again, ADU, that no state mandate, I think we need to do outreach to the community, so people know what's there, if they want to build a second dwelling, a granny flat, because I think it's important, because, you see, there's people here that want to build something in their house, and there's a state mandate, they can build it. El Centro is already permitting it, Brawley is, I can't tell you about Imperial, but I guess they are, and I'd like to see that we start permitting something, I mean, that state mandate. So, are you gonna, are we, are we letting it happen, or what's your...
Yeah, we're almost there at the, at the end zone. I've been working with the attorney, they sent us a couple of comments on certain things, so we should have this coming before you, hopefully within 30 days for the changes.
Okay, thank you. No other comments, questions?
No.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.